Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's a few minutes after seven. Let me call to order the meeting of the Planning Board for Tuesday, August 20th, 2019. Let me remind everyone who will address the board to be sure and sign in on the clipboard in front of me and make sure your microphone's turned on and that you speak clearly into it. Let me remind everyone that our next Planning Board meeting after tonight is September 3rd? Is that right, Robert?
Yes.
September 3rd, here in this room at 7:00 PM. Let me appoint Nelson into a voting position. And then before we jump into the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report, we have, let's take a moment to do a little bit of special recognition of our secretary, note-taker, minute preparer, who has been with us for how many years, Aida?
Almost sixteen.
Almost sixteen years. And tonight is her last night keeping our minutes. And we are eternally grateful for the many years of fine service. And we've also managed to prepare you a little gift. Come on up here for a second. Let's hand this to you. Thank you for that. Thank you, especially thank you for Alistair for making the arrangements for that.
I've got a carrying box for you, I'm going to give it to you.
You're good. I'll take it. Thank you. We can do that later.
Here, my dear. Put it in there, Ricky. It's easier in the car.
All right. Very good.
I'm truly thankful for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all that you do. We've had some very accurate and detailed, great minutes done. That's been a great help for us over the years, so. Thank you very much for that. Let's turn to our agenda in the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report. Robert, do you have anything for us tonight?
Just that the OVP condo conversion and the RH Cars site plan are not of regional impact.
Okay. What's the will of the Board with respect to that recommendation about regional impact?
Go ahead.
Discussion?
No.
Motion?
I make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation. The two items are not affected, do not come on the regional impact.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0 to uphold the staff's recommendation on regional impact. Anything else for us tonight, Robert?
No, that's all.
Any comments or questions from members of the Board for the staff?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
I'm looking at the agenda and I'm noticing the communications from Mr. Boecker regarding item number three. And then I have another memorandum or letter from Hoyle Tanner regarding item number four.
And five.
Well, see, that's the thing. I didn't see anything might pack it for number five. However, it doesn't say item number five. It just says item three and four.
I think it may have been renumbered because Hoyle Tanner's associated with four and five.
Okay.
Not three and four.
That's all I need to know. Thank you for the clarity.
Thank you for that. But thank you for the point of order for the benefit of anyone in the public who's come to participate in the consideration of items three, four, or five. Very likely, the Board will continue those to a future meeting here tonight, as been requested by the applicants on those. With that in mind, any other comments or questions from members of the Board for the staff? All right, let's take up item number three on our agenda, which is Crosswoods Path III LLC as the applicant and DW Development LLC as the owner. Continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct 21 multifamily residential and three office units. The parcel is located at 747 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation and Planned Residential Development Overlay Districts. Tax map 7E, lot 46-54. Planning Board Case PB 2019-23. Robert, is there anything that we need to know?
The applicant in this case has requested a continuance. They are still working through some engineering design difficulties and kind of got hung up due to some requests from EverSource. The power line easement goes directly over that property, so it's caused more delays on engineering for them.
When would they like to appear?
They're looking for, our suggestion is one month, so September 17th.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to continue to September 17th with no further notice to a butters. Is there a second?
I make a motion that we accept that.
He made the motion.
Oh, he made it. I second it.
All right. Motion and second to continue that item is September 17th. If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0 to continue that item. Item number four and five are both involve an applicant who's represented by my law firm. I'm glad to participate in the procedural matter of continuing them, but I won't vote. And I wouldn't engage in any substance on those. Item four, Hoyle Tanner and Associates, Inc. as the applicant and OVP Management, Inc. as the owner. Continued review for consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct 40 multifamily residential units. The parcel's located at 360 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial, Aquifer Conservation, Elderly Housing and Planned Residential Development Overlay Districts. Tax map 43, lot 1, Case Planning Board 2019-22. It is continued from our July 2nd and 16th Planning Board meetings. And there is a request from the applicant for September 17th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue to the September the 17th meeting at 7:00 PM in this room with no further notice to a butters.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Boyd. Without further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Record my vote as abstaining, so 3-0-1 to continue item number four. Item number five, Solaway and Hollis P LLC as the applicant and OVP Management, Inc. as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of condominium conversion. The parcel's located at 360 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial, Aquifer Conservation, Elderly Housing and Planned Residential Development Overlay Districts. Tax map 43, lot 1, Case Planning Board 2019-29. And this is another one that the applicant has requested to continue to the September 17th Planning Board meeting.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
With no further notice to a butter.
No further notice.
Seconded by Alistair. Without further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Record my vote as abstaining, so 3-0-1 to continue that item. Item number six on our agenda. John Flatley Company as the applicant and Gilbert Crossing LLC and John J. Flatley, owners. Review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved mixed-use development conditional use permit. I'm sorry, the parcel's located at 645, 673, 685, 703 and 707 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation and Wellhead Protection Districts. Tax map 6E, lot 31, 33, 34, 35, 36. And it is Case Planning Board 2019-27. This item is also one for which I would recuse myself. However, if I do that, we will lose a quorum. And so what I suggest the Planning Board does is defer consideration of this item while we take up item number seven, to see if we're fortunate enough to have another Planning Board member arrive and be able to address that item. Any objection to?
No objection, Mr. Chairman.
Does the agenda change?
Makes no sense.
And so we will defer the consideration of that one until after item number seven or potentially number eight as well. Item number seven on our agenda. RH Cars LLC as the applicant and Sunnyside Real Estate Holdings LLC as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct a paved car sales lot where the existing area is gravel. The parcel's located at 113 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map 2D, lot 18-1. It is case number Planning Board 2019-28. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Nope, I have nothing to add to the memo, so I'd just defer it to the applicant for presentation.
Thank you, Robert. So once you're settled in and you're set up, take a moment to introduce yourself. The camera actually can see it much better if you put it on this end.
Okay.
My name is Nathan Chamberlain, professional engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. And we're here for RH Cars. This is a facility down the south end of town on Daniel Webster Highway. Parcels are 2D, 18-, well, the parcel in question is 2D-18-1. And then we have 2D-18, which has the existing car sales building on it right here. So we flip to the site plan. First, we'll hit the existing business plan. So as I mentioned, it's RH Cars. He's got a car sales facility here. It's an existing building with a sales office and five service bays. Now, the service bays are only there to service his vehicles that he's selling. So they work on the vehicles there. There's no people bringing their cars in there for service. Basically, you know, you take the vehicles in, they need a little bit of repair before you put them out to sale, and that's what the bays are used for. And so that's in here. Sorry, my light's not really working for me tonight. So the building's here. And then this kind of shaded area is his existing paved portion where he parks cars for sale. He's got two bays for parked cars and then an aisle down the middle. So there's one along the highway and then one in back. And then he's got a little parking area in here for people coming in to visit, to park. He's got probably 10 parking spaces in there, handicap space. And then over here is a gravel area that he is using to store cars as well currently. And so what happens here is in the winter, in the mud season, the gravel area gets muddy and it's not very good for selling cars. So he would like to pave that. And that's what we're here to do, is to pave that area of the lot, 2D-18-1. If we flip to our site plan, we're essentially taking up the same area, only it's going to be paved now. And that's the shaded area here, obviously. And he's getting...
26, 47, 87, 93.
Eighty-three. Eighty-three spaces out of it. I know the staff had reviewed it and they had a question about the parking, what's available for customers coming in. And I did the math and it works out that with the storage areas, there's approximately 13,5 existing in the gravel up here. I'm sorry, in the bay portion up here. And then there's around 15,000 square feet proposed. You do the math and that works out to needing approximately 19 parking spaces for the parking required for a display. And then he's got approximately 1,200 square feet of office space, so he needs four spaces for the office. And then he's got five bays, so fifteen spaces for that. So it works out to quite a bit of parking spaces required for this. Right now, he's operating fine with a handful. So we can certainly carve out the parking spaces on this plan. It's required to meet that parking requirement, but I think it would be more reasonable to ask for a waiver. So we'll probably, we'll be submitting that as a waiver. And the other thing that you just mentioned tonight is that you prefer not to stripe this display area. I mean, it's not used for people to come in and park. It's used to park cars and display. So I could look into that and we could talk to the staff about whether that's, whether he needs to swipe that or not. His current area is not striped, so. And then as far as, so we're paving it, but one thing is right now, the existing gravel space does not meet, the gravel area does not meet the 20-foot setback from the highway for pavement. So we're pushing that back a little bit. You can just, the edge of gravel is just a little bit in front of this edge of pavement. And it all works out to essentially the same amount of runoff from the gravel surface as the paved surface. But we are proposing a little bit of a little stormwater mitigation area down here in the corner. It's basically two catch basins interconnected with a leaching.
Can you do me a favor? Point with your hand. The laser pointer is invisible from us.
Sorry, down in here.
Okay.
So there's two catch basins down in here, interconnected with a leaching pipe. And it overflows into a level spreader also down in this corner. And then currently, this whole area drains to the same location and goes down towards the river. So we're pretty much maintaining the existing drainage pattern. There's an existing swell that's on the edge of the gravel here that carries it down to this location now. So we're basically mimicking what's occurring today with a little bit of infiltration, as far as the drainage goes. As far as lighting, we are not proposing any additional lighting. There's currently floodlights that shine onto the pavement at a couple of poles on either corner. And those are sufficient to meet his needs. They're EverSource lights, so he pays EverSource for the bill for those. As well as along the existing parking field, there's some floods that are maintained by EverSource.
Explain the lighting in the new lot again for me quickly.
So... There's a couple of poles, existing poles on the corners. It's right here on the corner. So right here is a pole with a flood, and then down here is a pole with a flood. Those are existing. And he's using the light, the existing gravel area right now, so he's just going to maintain that with no additional poles.
Are those lights directed towards the street for street lighting? Or is those, how did those come to be located there?
They're, no, they're not pointing towards the street. They're pointing towards the property.
Okay.
And I don't know. They've been there for a while, so. Did you notice when they were installed or before your time or?
Since 2010.
2010.
I couldn't hear him.
2010 they were installed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Please proceed with your presentation and then we'll have some discussion about some of the questions we may have when you're finished.
I think that's about all I've got to offer. I mean, it's an existing gravel lot and he wants to pave it. That's pretty much the gist of it. We have done a little bit of mitigation for the drainage, as I mentioned. And other than that, we're maintaining existing grades essentially and the existing drainage patterns. And we can, we can put the spaces in there, but it's going to eat up quite a bit of his display area. Or we can ask for a waiver and probably leaning towards asking for a waiver because the parking requirement is pretty substantial when you add up all the display area. And he really doesn't need that amount of parking.
Excellent. Okay. The first order of business for the Board is to determine whether the application is complete and available for us to make a consideration of it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do have enough information to enable us to make an intelligent decision on this project.
Is there a second for finding it complete?
I have a question that I'd like to ask before I do that.
Okay.
And Bill's pointing at me. The drainage analysis that you've, has that been submitted for peer review?
Yes, it has. We're expecting comments back by the end of the week.
Okay. Then the only thing I think is missing is the lighting plan, photometric plan of some kind. And landscaping is also missing from this, so.
So the approach the Board can take is to decide that it's not complete because those items are missing or determine that it's complete, but then ask the applicant to provide them before we get to a final vote. I'm in favor of having both of those things as you are, so.
Yeah.
I don't think any, hear any objection from the Board members for wanting those things.
Okay. So do we want to, the question is, do we want to accept it for?
Whether it's completed or not?
For consider.
Sure. Some of the things that affect that question one way or another. The staff's recommendation is that we determine that it's complete. There's also a regulatory effect if we determine that it's complete in that we've got some site plan regulation amendments in the works. And whether this application would be subject to the existing or the new application, the regulations would turn on whether we decided it was complete tonight. Generally speaking, the couple of items that are missing are not the kind that would normally have interrupted us from determining if something was complete. That's my opinion.
I'll say I can motion then for the purposes of discussion and...
Okay. Any other discussion on the question of completeness? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So it's 4-0-0 to determine the application's complete. I have some comments and questions about your proposal. I think some of my other colleagues will as well, and you may hear also from the public. If your calculation of parking available for customers that are not display parking spaces is something on the order of 19 or 20 or something like that, I tend to agree with you that that's probably more than you need. And I would be open to considering a waiver. However, I would also offer the comment that as your site exists today and having once in a while occasion to come onto the lot and look around, you don't have enough parking as it exists today. I had no place to go the couple of times I've stopped in there. It's random times over months, but I always end up having to just stop in the middle of the aisle and sit there because there's nowhere to go. And then you look around for a couple of things and...
Sure.
Do what you want to do.
We can certainly allot some parking. It's in the middle somewhere.
It isn't enough as it is today. As Nelson suggested, I'm interested in understanding the lighting and whether there's enough for it to be a safe and secure lot for, you know, cars to be on display. You wouldn't sort of invite, you know, someone to, someone with ill intent to get into any mischief because the parking lot was too dark or anything like that. I'd want to make sure it's nice and safe. And I understand that there's some lights there, and if those are enough, that's great. But I can't tell that without having a lighting plan.
Understood.
I am also interested in discussing landscaping and understanding anything that can be done to focus on the appearance from the street of the site. And generally speaking, the site that exists today is a fairly well-kept, neat site, so I don't have any complaints about it. But I don't see any landscaping in the new plan. I'd like to know what we could do and talk about with that. I'm interested in understanding what our peer review folks think of the drainage plan. I'm not sophisticated enough at drainage plans to offer my own interpretation. However, it seems like you've got a site that drains off to the southeast and the plan is to allow it to continue to do that with some, with some structures that may mitigate that or slow it down a little bit. And I think that with new pavement, you'd want to intercept your own water and not run it off into the neighbor's parking lot, especially when you get to parking lot runoff with the potential for the things that come off of cars, either washed off of the outside like salt or road debris or oil and things that might leak and drip. When you're running off of pavement, it's different than running off of gravel.
Sure.
And so I'd want to make sure that our peer review folks think that that is appropriate. As long as they do think it's appropriate, I wouldn't have any particular objection to it. General comment, I'm glad your business is doing well enough that they want to have more cars for sale. I think that's great. Good for them. I think those are, oh, with respect to the bays and counting those for parking or whether they're used for his current approach, because those structures exist in the building, we have to accept that they could be used for public service or, you know, maintaining vehicles for the public. And we wouldn't have any regulatory approach that says ignore them even though they're there or put a note on the plan that says you can't use them for the public. You know, there's really, so we've got to treat them as if they're...
Sure.
Public bays. The last comment is, do you guys intend to merge these two lots into one?
I don't believe there's any plans for that.
Robert, is there any regulatory effect of having a property line that divides this way with the development that's close to the lines?
So with, in terms of parking, no. We did discuss this, we met with the applicant preliminarily before they submitted the application. They are going to have to, since they are keeping the lot separate, put cross easements in place in order to allow for that movement to occur between the two lots because obviously theoretically, they could sell one of the lots at some point.
So we need to make sure that our legal counsel is weighing in on that because holding cross easements by the same owner is actually something that isn't possible to do in the law. You can't have an easement over your own property.
Right. So I don't know how that gets worked out. There is an existing access easement because there is only one driveway cut allowed to serve both of the lots. Apparently, that was a DOT condition when the lot was subdivided. So there has to be some tweaking done with that somehow. I don't know the legal logistics of all of that, so that's going to be...
As long as we send it to our town attorneys for review and they understand that both lots are held at the same ownership, they'll get it right. It may be something that you can create that isn't an actual easement in the present, but if either lot gets sold, it comes into existence.
Okay.
You used to do some title research. You'd understand kind of the ins and outs of that.
I'm following what you're saying.
Okay. I'll shut up for a while, see if you guys have any comments or did I steal all the good ones?
I guess the question I have for staff is, what are the requirements for landscaping as it relates to this? Just out of curiosity.
So there's really not with the town, because the town owns property on the backside, so there's not there. And on the south side, it's already heavily wooded, so that works out. My concern in looking at it, and I'm glad the Board brought it up, is the property to the north. I have no information on what the use of that property is. And the other difficulty is this use is allowed by variance on this property and the abutting property across the street is industrially zoned, industrial use. This property itself is owned industrial. If it was industrial to industrial, there would be no landscaping requirement between them, but this technically falls under a commercial use by special exception, so it wouldn't hurt to have something. I just, I don't have an answer right now for what that would be, for BAE anyway, but my bigger concern would be that property to the north where there's nothing. And I just don't know what the use of that property is.
Isn't that the plate glass place or at least it used to be?
It was glass.
Marble glass.
Marble glass. No. No. It's Dunn. And it's a, yeah, it was a...
Are you right? It's one more. Marble glass is one removed.
Yeah.
So the fellow that cuts all firewood and stores it in those bins?
That's further up to the...
That's further up. Yeah. Dunn had a business there. I think it's used mostly residential.
It's residential as well.
Okay. So if it's a residential use, then there's a substantial landscaping requirement between the two?
I think there is some landscaping there already. As I recall, there's some arbor vita or something that's been planted there in the past.
I don't believe so. I think now, I believe I looked at some Google photos and I think all that showed was just some rocks on the ground. I don't think there's very much there.
My initial thought, just being familiar with that particular part of town, I agree with the chairman. I personally would like to see lighting at that location because if it's not done correctly, it's creating a potential, I hate to use the words like nuisance or hazardous, but it's creating an unsavory situation for the applicant in terms of...
Attractive nuisance or something like that.
You know, in terms of, you know, nefarious things happening to the vehicles. To me, the landscaping, I find onerous, but just based on how that flows down the south end of town. I mean, to me, I would find it just a little bit of an imposition to have a landscaping requirement for the applicant, knowing what I've seen down there and realizing that there's not much, you know, it's not much, it's, whatever you try to do, to be honest with you, it's not like it's going to blend in. It's going to stick out like a sore thumb. So I almost would rather, and of course, it's at the Board's jurisdiction, I would rather give them a waiver for the landscaping and focus specifically on the lighting because I think that's where the real impact I see that lot having some issues with. And I'd rather this Board focus on making sure that the lighting is more than adequate at that location than perseverating over whether to put arbor vitae or something on those particular lines at a specific location just to meet the requirement of the ordinance. So, but that's just my immediate go-around with this.
I appreciate your comments. My thought on landscaping, and I'm kind of looking at the satellite picture, we've got the old DCU branch next to the south and they've got a little bit of a grass strip with some trees in it and it's maintained. And the front of the existing car lot's got a, you know, 10, 15-foot wide grass strip with a few bushes and trees peppered in there. It says a winter picture, so it's kind of hard to spot them. But a little something at the streetscape to make it look a little bit presentable is what I was thinking of in terms of the landscaping requirement. Not necessarily looking at it and saying, we need to screen BAE so they don't have to see the car lot. That's not what I'm thinking. But anyway, and as to the one to the north, since that's probably a not being modified end of the development, I would say if nobody's complaining about the boundary up there, leave it alone. Although people disagree, that's why we all get a voice. Other comments or questions so far for the applicant? Nelson?
Okay. I want to go over some of these same things. With regard to the lighting, there's an issue there right now with lighting. there's an issue there right now with lighting shining into the road, into DW Highway. As you're coming south, and this only is noticeable in, when it's dark, like early in the morning. The lights from those poles shine right onto the highway, and they shine right in the eyes of people driving cars. So that's a hazardous situation that violates our present regulations. It ought to be fixed. I agree with the chairman. Maybe you need some more lighting lower down to light your, your area of display so people can see it and not get lost in there. But those lights that are there are not compatible with our present regulations. They're, they're up too high and they shine onto the road. The, with regard to landscaping, I think my only concern, my concern with landscaping would be on the frontage of the new lot, just that you do something besides weeds between the new lot and the, and the highway.
Okay.
Along that frontage.
Look at that.
Okay, and you've taken care of the drainage, or our peers will take care of the drainage. Was BAE identified as an abutter in this listing? It doesn't show on the plan, but that's okay. If it's been shown and there's been notice.
It's there, Nelson.
It does stay on two D six.
Oh, my mistake. Okay, I missed it. All right. And the, the I don't know if it's on this plan or not, but it, I, what, there should be, if the, if any of this is in the floodplain, the floodplain line should be shown, the hundred-year flood.
Sure.
I don't know, it's just a big blank area there, and.
In that, there's actually a note on the, trying to see if it's on both sheets. No, it's definitely on existing conditions. It's note number nine. It says that they are both outside.
Existing. What page are you on?
Sheet one. It's right after the cover sheet.
Which is three, right? Oh, no. Here?
Note nine there.
Okay, note nine says.
Sorry, partially located.
Yeah, outside the flood hazard. Okay. Okay, I didn't, I didn't see that note on that page, so, okay. Let me see if there's anything else that was on my list that about does it. You've answered. The notes on the plan should show that it's going to be paved and not gravel.
Yes, actually, I was going to tell you that. If you look at sheet three, it says gravel parking lot.
Yeah, and you picked up, I think you, staff has picked up on Fairpoint versus whoever the latest phone guy is. And that's all I have.
But, and why you've got all the little parking spaces, so you'll see about halfway down the thing, it says gravel parking lot.
Oh, that's, it's gravel. That's an existing note.
Yeah.
So underneath it's gravel.
Existing conditions plan, but it shows on your other sheets too.
I'll buy it, but not on the final, on the new plan, it's paved.
Right, so it's a different type of font, and that tells you that that's an existing condition?
And then there's another technical query, is I don't believe that the site is served by MVD.
It's not. It's, and that's been picked up by the staff.
Correct.
It says on the plan, MVD.
Yeah, we're going to clean up all those minor comments from the staff.
The staff.
Yeah, the staff have got it. I'm just making the point, yeah.
Sure. One of the things that the applicant has asked or, or put up for consideration that we should discuss and is whether we would want or see or require striping of the parking spaces in the new space. And knowing how a car lot works, where sometimes because of snow or whatever's going on, they're moving cars around, they're compacting them. As long as you've got some designated customer parking spaces, so a buyer can come in and park somewhere, I don't care what you do in your display area. Personally, I don't know if my, my colleagues agree with that.
I'd be okay with that.
I'd have that, huh? Yeah. I think that generally speaking, you're, you're numbering the spaces in the display area, and if you don't stripe them, you'll probably squeeze in some more cars, and I don't know if that matters to anybody, but.
In fact, when, when they've got snow, they will probably want to park the cars much closer so they can plow around them. Most car dealers seem to do that.
Yeah. So. And I don't mind any of those strategies. I can do what you want for, for those kinds of things in your display area. Yeah, we'll definitely. Does anyone disagree with that?
Delineate some spaces dedicated to customers.
Stuff dedicated to customers and then formally request a waiver of the parking space striping.
For the full amount.
Formally request a waiver of the total number of parking spaces, because I don't think that you need nineteen or whatever the number came out to be, but identify what seems like a reasonable number so that you've got all of your staff covered, and you've got some spaces that won't be used for display that general public come in and park on. Is there any reason, or Robert, do we need to take up the question of sidewalks on this site? Is there one existing, or should we avoid or consider a waiver of it?
For the time being, avoid that discussion. One, it's DOT jurisdiction, and we don't have an approved plan anyway. But two, I think there's a sidewalk here anyhow.
There is a sidewalk there, I think, and I would discuss it if it wasn't already there.
Excellent.
Well, until we get that plan approved, it's that catch twenty-two where we're kind of forbidden from approving additional sidewalks in DOT jurisdiction area.
We're not forbidden from doing anything, in my view. Okay.
Well, yeah. I, I tend to agree with Nelson that there's always ways to ask and to move things ahead, but if there's already a sidewalk there, it doesn't matter. It actually looks like there might be sidewalks on both sides of the road there, which is pretty good.
There's not on BAE. Well, maybe there is on BAE.
If you look at the satellite site, there is. Anyway, doesn't matter. You got, you got the sidewalks dealt with. Anything else from discussion for members of the board? Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Open and close the public hearing. It appears that we've got some work to accomplish with getting some peer review, and then you've got some changes that you wanted to make with some things on the plan and also some things in response to our comments.
Conservation commission, Mr. Chairman.
And the conservation commission hasn't seen you yet. What, so it seems appropriate for us to consider continuing the consideration of this to a future date. What is a date or time that will allow us to accomplish all things we need to accomplish?
So staff's recommendation is September seventeenth, if that works for the applicant.
It says twenty-fourth from the memo.
It's a typo. There's no meeting that day.
Fourteenth, that's Sunday, or Saturday.
Twenty-fourth is a Tuesday. Is the seventeenth of September okay with you guys?
Yes.
You can achieve what you need to achieve, bud.
We've just put a lot of stuff on that night, that's all.
Everything from tonight just got punted to that night.
We'll bring breakfast that night, no worries.
Well, we, you know, may have some other applicants who are not yet in the mix, who are looking at that night as well. So is there a motion to continue this application?
Chairman, I make a motion. We continue this matter till the seventeenth of September at seven PM in this room with no further notice to abutters.
Is there a second?
First second.
Motion and second. Is there anything else you need to hear from us tonight that you were looking for feedback on?
No, that was good.
Robert, are there any questions that the staff wanted us to answer that we haven't tangled up?
Nope, not this time.
Okay. With that in mind, I have no further discussion on the motion to continue. Anyone else? Then all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Four zero zero to continue this. Thank you very much, and we'll see you in about a month. Turning back to item, what is it, six on our agenda? Let's invite a little bit of discussion with the applicant. Let me, I already read it into the record. If you want to come up, we'll have a little bit of discussion about what exactly process we can do that works. If I recuse myself, you won't have a quorum, and then the board can't take any action. And if there's some desire to have a presentation and then continue it anyway, I think that you could manage that, even though we would have three people as a quorum. As opposed to that, we could take a little bit of a recess. I could try and reach some of the missing planning board members on the phone, see if we get somebody to come down here for you. I don't know who I would get, or whether I would get anybody, or if that effort, but if you'd like that, we could do that. Or if you just want to straight up continue to next time, we can take up that consideration as well.
I was going to say, I think we can continue. There are, there are two items that we were going to have to wait till the next meeting anyway. One was a fiscal impact, revised fiscal impact statement. I've got numbers on it. Everything is fine with it, but I would want to give you something, you know, obviously a hard copy, formalized. And that'll, that'll outline not only the fiscal impact for the entire project, but it would also go towards some discussion on the fifth apartment building, whether or not there'd be a net positive fiscal impact there.
I'd stay out of all the substantive discussion, but if you're okay with just doing a continuance, we can manage that with what we have here tonight.
That works.
I apologize to you for not having enough members here, and I'll see if I can make sure we can get those folks here for next time for you.
Not a problem at all. Thank you.
With the applicant's feedback on that, it's appropriate, when would you like to have it continued until?
I think we're continuing, I think that's for the seventeenth too, right?
Yeah, so we were suggesting the seventeenth based off of a presentation being given, but with the lack of a board presence, I mean.
A presentation misses all the eyes you want to see it anyway.
I'd be comfortable with September third, and I don't know if that works for you for getting the, your fiscal done.
The day after Labor Day.
The day after Labor Day. Two days after Labor Day, right?
One day.
Monday's, Labor Day's the second, that's Monday. This will be Tuesday the third. Are you going far away for Labor Day?
I am going nowhere for Labor Day.
And nor am I.
I'm laboring on Labor Day.
Yeah. If that, yeah, I think that works. We can at least, hopefully I have everything by then. If not, we can still give an initial presentation.
So I have no comment on that or objection to it, except to say that occasionally on the day after a holiday, like the fifth of July and the third of September, we may struggle with a quorum as well. Sometimes that happens.
We will compel them to come, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly can do our best.
School, even the Merrimack schools are like that, man. So parents are probably.
If you have an idea and you're not going to have one, just give me a call.
Okay, sounds good. With that in mind, the applicant is agreeable to a continuance to September the third.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, though, in, along with the kindness of the applicant, we'll make a motion to extend this, continue this matter till September the third at seven PM in this room with no further notice to abutters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have people in the audience that are here tonight to testify, listen to the testimony as it relates to the application to Gilbert's Crossing, and I certainly want to apologize to the community members as well for taking time out of their schedule to be active listeners and participate in this, in this proceedings. And certainly, I do want to apologize for the lack of a quorum to them, and let them know that hopefully we'll have a quorum on the third.
We will.
So that with this can, this project can continue to be vetted, not only to the applicant's satisfaction, but also to interested community members. Thank you.
Well said, and thank you for remembering to mention those things. Other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of continuing to September third, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Record my vote as abstaining. Three zero one to continue to September third. Thank you. That brings us to item eight on our agenda, which is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Any board member have any other items of concern to discuss?
Just, just a quick question. Mr. Chairman, I noticed we've had a note from the community development director about this October meeting. Is the, is the town doing the usual procedure? We book it and then notify you. You didn't even know it was on.
No idea.
There's an OEP meet, sorry.
Oh, the law lectures.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, so let us know. I honestly don't know, because there haven't been NHMA members since I've been here. Previous towns I've worked in, it was let the staff know if you're planning to attend, we will get you registered. I don't know if there's a way for you to register.
There is a registering online form has come through.
Is there a way, yeah, is there a way to invoice the town?
It is a hundred dollars, which is why I'm asking the point.
That's the thing, is I don't know if there's a way to choose to have the town invoiced. Sometimes they offer those. I'm not sure. If there's not, just let us know. We'll get you registered, and that way we get the invoice.
My recommendation would be to have Tim have a conversation with the town manager so that we can figure out how to get it done. Because this was a bone of contention at the council level last year when we rejoined the NHMA. I was in the minority for a variety of different reasons, but this was one of the things that was discussed by the council that the planning board and the ZVA and the CONCOM have access through the NHMA to have access to training so that they could be brought up to date on certain laws and techniques that are being exercised by our local land use boards here in the state of New Hampshire. So I would just ask you to reach back to Tim and Eileen to figure out how to make it work so that the members of our land use boards can, can register and not have to worry about having to front the money and receive them for reimbursement.
Not, the town will definitely be covering the registration fees. That's not a question. It's just a matter of, are you able to register yourselves without being sent the invoice yourselves?
Right, so.
But I've, I've actually had the thing from the NMRA to, to apply online. I was just.
Yes, we have the thing, and I tried to apply online, and the only way I could see to do it was to pay, to give them my credit card.
That's what I thought, too, yes.
Let's let the town manager and community development figure out the best process.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
We'll work it out.
I think that many years ago, when we were members before, I'm sure the NHMA did their business exactly the same way, and we managed. So I think that, I know that I didn't pay, pay money and get reimbursed.
And I think years ago, was filling out a form, they mailed it in, and, and that was, that was it. So, you know, NHMA's got into the twenty-first century, I guess, with their registering things online now, so we'll.
I think Jeff and Nancy just took care of it. You said, hey Nancy, I'd like to go, and she registered.
That's correct.
So, anyway.
That's correct.
Any other items of concern or discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none, we have on our agenda item nine as approval of the minutes of August sixth, twenty nineteen. What is the will of the board?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Four zero zero to accept the minutes. They are approved. That concludes the business on our agenda.
Can I exercise a point of personal privilege, Mr. Chairman?
Of course you can.
I know we gave Zionus some flowers, but I would be remiss since we are potentially adjourning at a very reasonable hour, so our, our moments have been shortened as a consequence. So Zion, thank you so much for all the years of serving the community and whatever you choose to do with your retirement. I wish you nothing but health and happiness with your future, future travels.
Hey, hey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor.
That motion to adjourn.
Before I take a second, because I can't comment, I'll take a second. I know that the town council has on various occasions chosen to honor different people for service. I would encourage them to consider doing so for Zion if they haven't already. And maybe they have.
I've already made a mental note of it, Mr. Chairman.
Beautiful, thank you. Is there a second for the motion to adjourn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Several seconds and a third. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
My wife's been shocked that I'm.